Good. Call this meeting to order. Stop the tops of select board. It's April 3rd, 2025, and we're in a Donnelay Russell meeting. Please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Patty, please call the roll.
I will. Ronny Tubs.
Here.
Marie Brilliant. Anne Callahan. Ryan Holmes.
Present.
Matt Nixon.
Yes.
All present and our town manager, Mark Walsh, is also at the head table.
Excellent. Thank you. Town managers report.
Good evening. Town meeting is on Wednesday, May 28th at 7 o'clock PM. That's the forum room at Mount Arat High School. Copies of the warrant are available online at the town website. Will be enclosed in the May Crier newspaper, which gets mailed to all residents and will be available at town hall after May 1st. The combined select board TDI workshop to hear the results of the right pier study on the cost of extending water in sewer east of I-295 as well as to upgrade areas on, sorry, to extend it west of 295, as well as to upgrade areas east of 295 which need improvements will be on Tuesday, May 20th at 6:00 PM, right here in this room. And finally, congratulations to school resource officer Gabrielle Matthew, who was recently named the lead instructor of the year for Maine. Lead is a program that encourages kids not to get involved with drugs. That's all I got.
Great, thank you. Top techs, board and committee reports. We have none. Public comment?
We have none.
Zero. Okay, thank you. Correspondence. Did anyone get any correspondence this week? Okay. No adjustments to the agenda consent counter. Approval of the minutes of the regular select board meeting held March 20th, 2025. Motion.
Move.
Move to second. All in favor? Motion carries. We're carrying unfinished business. Twenty-five dash twenty-one consideration and any appropriate action on the appointments of members to the voter registration appeals board.
You turn the mic off. Just slide it up. There was a question at the last meeting for the town clerk on who the third member of the board was. The town clerk, is that answered?
Hi, good evening. I'm here to request the select board to appoint two members and two alternates to the registration of appeals board. And the third member is the chair, and he doesn't expire until March 26th. So it's just the two members and the two alternates that need to be appointed.
And the third member is?
Peter LeDerry. Thank you.
This, I'm assuming this is just more about formality. The parties have voted who they want to go forward.
Yes, they don't.
Do you have your names again?
I got the clerk from.
Gail Eaton is the Democratic.
The chair.
Representative.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you. All right. Motion, please.
I make a motion to appoint the following members to the voter registration appeals board of the Democratic Party, Gail Eaton, and as alternate William Eaton to the Republican Party, Ellen Sarvenas, and the alternate Diane Vernasone.
Say it.
Second in all, favor. Motion carries. Old business, not new business. Twenty-five dash twenty-eight. Consideration and any appropriate action on a request to explore a TIF for, for, for Union Park Drive.
While Dave Holman gets up and gets his computer ready and joins, I'll give a brief introduction. So when they would like to make a request to you tonight, you're, tonight you obviously couldn't approve a TIF that would have to go to town meeting, but we didn't want to do work and start incurring attorney's fees or spend time working on a TIF if you weren't interested in us pursuing that. So tonight's presentation is going to give you an idea of what they'd like to do, what they think to perceive benefits to the town to be of the TIF. And then at the end of it, you folks can make a decision on whether you wish for us to either proceed with negotiating one or processing start one. So nothing would be a final decision tonight. But if it's a hard no, we don't want to waste their time or our time. With that, Dave, looks like you want to attend the, or Jason, whose computer should I promote?
Well, if it's mine, I would need to plug in or get online.
Oh, so it's not yours?
Do you want me in the Zoom?
So I've got Jason Lord with a hand raised, so should I?
He may have our slides.
I promote him to a panelist.
Just starting out.
Yep. But no, I'd rather have them do their, control their presentation, so. And Jason, I think you can unmute yourself if you want. And if, I can also make it so you can share your screen if you want to show the presentation.
Hopefully this works. Good evening, everyone. Let me get my camera to work here as well.
Should I promote Camilla Elliott as well, or?
Camilla would just be in the background listening, so.
Okay, so I won't promote her then.
We need tech help. She's, I will work to get this presentation here pulled up. Have it handy and with a quarter.
Yeah, I have it as a PowerPoint on my computer that I can join Zoom and then share a screen if that is.
That would work.
I can also share it here. Either one, whatever is easiest.
Oh, I think, I think that's what I've got here. Yeah, March 7th, early. Thanks for your patience, folks.
Recording in progress.
Okay. This mic, so I don't.
Yep.
Did echo. All right, so now I'm in the Zoom.
And you want to mute the speaker too, Dave, as well as the mic?
Yeah, I muted my speaker, so. Think. Jason, can you hear me? Give a thumbs up if you're remotely up in the brain. Okay, so I will share my screen and then get into our presentation. There. Now. Let's turn to the last slide. Okay. Thanks for your patience. Technology is sort of a double edged sword, but we're up and running here. So I'm Dave Holman. Born and raised in Maine from North Yarmouth. Been working mostly in Brunswick, Bath Topps, some area for the past 10 years. First with Oden College and then got into real estate development. And I've slowly tried to make more housing in the area. And it comes to the time when that's something we all need. And most recently, I partnered with my best friend from college, Jason Lord, who actually went and did something with his college degree by becoming an architect and working as a developer much more than me. So out of Minnesota, he and his partner Kurt Dunsmann have built over 3,000 apartments for workforce housing, some kind of middle class housing. It's not deeply subsidized, you know, government housing, and it's not luxury condos or anything like that. It's kind of in this middle sector for working people earning average, you know, salaries and wages. And that's what we're hoping to do here at Topson. And some of you are in the loop, and this is your sixth meeting with us and others is the first time. So thank you very much, you know, for considering this. And I'll kind of start and end by saying something that's probably obvious to everyone, which is that it's really a tough environment to build housing in right now. And that's why we're here, because it's not cheap and it's getting harder as the hour and day go by. So over in Brunswick, we built the Sandpiper residences, which if you're going to Wild Oats, it's on your left. It's the building that doesn't look like all the other buildings. And that's because we work with great architects. So we try to make these designs really appealing so that even though it's, it's a tall building, you can see it's four stories. Here, it doesn't feel imposing. That photo on the other side, it is a nice, you know, wraparound front porch. And we really try to connect to the streetscape for, you know, pedestrians to go out and enjoy their surroundings. So we're hoping to do that same sort of thing here in Topson at a larger scale. And we worked with the planning board and others over the past year and a half to zone this lot so that a project like this could be built there. I had previously allowed something like 32 apartments on it, and it's now would go up to 187. Although the new zoning that Topson is recoding and planning would eliminate all of those limits. And, you know, in theory, you could build a million units there. But obviously, with paint limits, with, you know, other restrictions, that's impossible and no one, no one will do that. But we're proposing 180 apartments in this spot, which is a lot. And it's something that has not been done yet, I think, in Topson in this kind of building. It's more of an urban style building. But we think that's really efficient. It's a really good use of land. You know, thinking of it as we could put each of these on one acre and clear cut 180 acres of woods, you know, to have these kind of homes in the community. And developers do that, and they're doing it freeboard in, you know, communities like ours all over right now. This is only going to take up, well, less than four acres, and it's all already paved. It's a big parking lot. If you've been to Forty Union Park recently, it's basically a big empty parking lot for when the McTKB Law Firm had 70 employees. Now there's, we're averaging about 12 to 15 cars a day in 120 spots. So it's mostly converting asphalt into housing. So in this partnership with my, you know, friends and partners in Minnesota, I think I've covered a lot of this. One of the key parts of this slide is that we put a lot of the parking underground. So in this building, over 100 parking spots would be underneath the footprint of the building. That allows us to save a buffer of trees around the site. We don't have to clear cut all the trees in order to get enough parking here. I'm not going to pretend that we, some trees don't have to come down, and indeed many will. But we're very excited to save as many as we can along the buffers. And some of the trees that would come down, we can reuse in the building itself, which we did at the Sandpiper. It's kind of a neat effect. So, you know, we're trying to be as green as we can, which isn't perfect. We have to make compromises sometimes, you know. We can't, we're probably going to do the heating and cooling with a heat pump technology, which we did in Sandpiper. We probably will have to do the water heating with natural gas because the heat pump technology for commercial spaces like this is very costly and very consuming of space. You need huge tanks. Whereas the sort of standard way of doing it doesn't. And maybe that'll change in the future, and we can convert over. But, you know, for now, that's what we're looking at. The other really neat thing about these buildings is floor to ceiling windows. So you're getting a lot of natural light in these apartments. And people really like the Sandpiper. We're 100% occupied. We just opened in September. And there's a waitlist now of over 30 people to be there. And I think that speaks a little bit to the demand in our communities. And I'm sure we've all heard this refrain of like, I can't live in Topson even though I work there. So I'm living in Lisbon or Odenham or other places and commuting in. And we've seen BIW, I mean, they've been in touch with me directly, asking for more housing, Mid Coast Hospital. They've lost nurses and doctors who can't find a place to live in our towns when there's so little on the market. So this is the site that you see here, a little under four acres. What I think we all probably agree is really great about it is that it's not butting up against single family housing. So, you know, we're not going to be disturbing a built-in community here. It's already sort of a commercial office park, you know, for lack of a better word, but it's right near the Topson Therma. McTKB built this site to be equidistant, you know, from Portland and Augusta and right near the highway. So it's, I think, a really ideal location where we're not, again, disturbing a lot of natural green spaces and we're not disturbing single family housing. We're building, you know, multifamily workforce housing in a spot where it's really convenient for people to live and work. More on the site here, so we have 182 parking stalls for the apartments, 61 total for the offices, for a total of 217, no, I'm sorry, 243. Small screen there, let me move. Screen away. You know, we'd be following setbacks, having it sort of in the middle of the parking lot at Forty Union Park right now. And we think it's a really good use of this space, especially because the new zoning would allow this kind of density, even though we've already changed the density to allow for this building on the site.
Dave, if you'd like, I've got a summary PDF here.
I can, I can share as well with some images that might present a little bit better to everybody.
Sure.
Share. And as Dave was saying on the site, I'll share a PDF here of the. And let me know if everybody can see it. But this would be a summary of our, our site plan here of all the, the different amenities that we would be proposed and, and sharing on, on site, if that's coming through. And as Dave mentioned, the goal to try to preserve the trees and have as much as we can along the property boundaries and provide this dense level of housing with landscaped areas, covered entry, a porch similar to the Sandpiper project and, and other native landscaping replaced where we had to take landscaping out for construction. And then I, I hope everybody's familiar with the, the Sandpiper building. But we'd really propose to, to do a lot of the same finishes and style of that building, but updated to an even better version for Topson, taking our learnings that we had and our customer feedback the past couple of years and really improving on it and iterating on it to make an even better building for Topson. And here were some interior pictures as well of our Sandpiper project that we just completed. And Dave, I don't know if you want to talk at all about any of the customer feedback or what any of the, you know, response has been to the Sandpiper project?
We have five stars on Google, so nobody has yet to give us a four or three, two or one. I'm sure it'll happen someday. But residents are really happy there. And something I think to emphasize to everyone here in Topson is that we expected, you know, in Minneapolis, what Jason has built is a lot of millennials, Gen Z, younger folks in these apartments in bigger cities. At Sandpiper, you know, we have a Korean War veteran who lives there. We have a 91-year-old woman who lives there. Our average age might be 65 to 70 in these apartments. We have a total of three children, only one of whom is in the school system out of 63 apartments. And we are not deeded senior housing. We're not pushing away families and kids, but we're, you know, studios, one bedroom and two bedroom apartments. You can't fit a very big family in those to begin with. And, and B, most families are looking for a single family house. You know, they want three bedrooms. They want larger formats in general. So what we found is it has a really good impact for the community, especially for seniors, retirees who are looking to downsize. We've got a number of residents who either sold their houses or are moving from a big condo to live in a building like this, where you have underground parking, you have an elevator, you have a gym, fitness center, roof deck, community spaces, all under one roof. Then it's not assisted living or a retirement home. It's independent. It's a regular apartment. But that's a little bit of our demographic, which was a big surprise, I think, for all of us. I mean, we thought it would skew a little older, but it truly has been really popular among old folks for better or worse.
As Dave was mentioning, here are some other pictures of some of the common areas and gathering spaces that we plan to have in this project. These are very similar to the spaces we designed and built across the river at the Sandpiper.
Let me go through some of this here. So what we're proposing is using a main housing TIF, affordable TIF, which is at 120% of AMI is the maximum rent that we can charge for those 33% of the units here, which would be over 60 units, or no, yeah, slightly. Oh, 61 or two. I won't try to do math on the spot. But it would be a huge amount of needed affordable housing for Topson. And we'd be excited to do that. These wouldn't be as cheap as something like the Brunswick Housing Authority, you know, can build where they're getting very different subsidies than we are, which is at the moment, nothing. And so we're, we're sort of, you know, affordable light, you could call it, where these are going to be capped. We can't drive rents up even if the market is changing dramatically. And it's all governed through housing intervin development. They publish rates that are the maximums that can be charged. We verify those with John Hodge at the Housing Authority to certify that each of the affordable units is meeting those criteria, basically. We're trying to build a very low emission building, as I mentioned earlier, which we're really proud of, that connects a lot with nature on the site nearby. We have backup power, although this area is very close to the big substation. We haven't had a lot of outages there. At Sandpiper, we have eight electric vehicle chargers. Here we have much more, probably around 20 to 30, I would say. And we'd be wiring it so that we can add more in the future if that is the way that transportation goes over hydrogen or who knows what will happen. But this is a building we hope will be here for hundreds of years because it's quality. It's not something that gets thrown up from a kit quickly and, you know, is going to be abandoned in 50 years. We're trying to do it right the first time. I'll go to the next slide. So some of the other benefits, this would create jobs as well, not just construction jobs, which there'd be probably 200 over a two month, sorry, two year period. I would create three full-time jobs, a manager, a leasing agent, and a maintenance position as well. So that would add a lot to Topson. We would have new sidewalk in front of the building, boulevard trees, pedestrian front of the streetscape. Already mentioned how we will try to save trees, underground parking, and a walking path around the perimeter of the site that we hope could connect. There's a path right here to the substation that goes out to Mount Arat as well. Next slide. So here's the challenges. Here's why we're here. It's really, really, really expensive, not just to build in the US, but particularly to build in Maine. We have a very limited labor pool in the state. It's an aging labor pool. And, you know, our framing crew from Sandpiper had to come from out of state because there just wasn't availability in state. So the costs of the construction are around $300 a square foot right now. Just a few years ago, when Oden built the new dorms, you know, right on Main Street, those were $170 a square foot. So the costs have almost doubled in the past five to 10 years. And they're going up right now, unfortunately. And that's my third bullet. I mean, today's headline news is all about cost increases for materials. And so that's a really challenging supply chain problem that is going to prevent us from building this building unless we work together, is, is our hope. You know, taxes are high. That's just sort of the nature of life. And there's a lot of impact fees as well, you know, between site work and, and the fees the town would charge. That's almost a billion dollars for a project like this. So it takes a lot of investment and, and risk on, on my part, on Jason's part, to build multifamily housing like this. But it's a need that I think we all agree exists. And this is a way to actually make a meaningful impact, I think, on the housing crisis within Topson and the area because we're not doing this one at a time. We're not clear cutting 100 acres to put up half billion dollar, you know, starter homes. We're building on three acres essentially. And we're building housing that's going to be affordable for people to live and work in Topson.
And to add on that, what, what Dave said is it really, it really is an investment for generations that we're doing. And I also really appreciated the work with the planning commission as well to get this density on the site and to allow an infill project such as this because I think it's the most effective use and steward of community resources. And, and with this project, for example, we're able to provide 180 units of housing, you know, to house several hundred people. And the need for additional sewer lines that the town would have to build is, is not compared to, as Dave mentioned, clear cutting a forest, which would have, you know, miles of added infrastructure. There certainly is a marginal cost for pump stations and of course, you know, need for city services that the people generate. But it also is an incredibly efficient way to use existing infrastructure, both on a cost standpoint and from a carbon footprint standpoint. We're using the existing roads. We're using the existing sewer, existing power infrastructure, and really turning a parking lot into housing. And also our Sandpiper project, you know, some might look at it and think that the cost basis is significantly different than some of the other eight or 12 unit buildings that are going up like Atlantic Point or other projects. But yet we were able to build the Sandpiper at the same rate or perhaps even lower than our competitors that we've gained some cost data on we're able to do down in Brunswick. And it's just a much more compact site. We were able to provide underground parking, which helped us utilize the site and preserve a lot of the trees. And, and that is some of the challenges. We had a very, very rainy spring, if people remember, a couple of years ago. And of course, as soon as we were digging our foundations, the rains never stopped. So as a lighthearted joke on the challenges, that was our picture of the Sandpiper basement. But in less than a year later, it was full of people and it worked. People love having the safety of heated underground parking. They don't have to deal with snow and slip and fall. So we really view this building as a community asset that will provide these benefits for generations and be an incredibly efficient way to use community infrastructure.
Go to the next slide. So right now, we have a significant gap in our ability to green light the project, basically. We're working on value engineering, and we think we can fill about half of that gap with value engineering, which is basically saying, cutting out bells and whistles. You know, we've already streamlined the siding and size of the building, working on different suppliers and bidding, that sort of process. We think we can save about $6 million that way. That still leaves us with a $5.5 million gap essentially to what a bank will be willing to fund this project. What we're hoping for is funding through a credit enhancement agreement in the existing TIF in this district at a rate of 75%, which would represent about $375,000 a year. And we'll, we'll explain why that's actually, I think, a win-win for Topson in a minute. But I think a project like this, we, we can't do it right now, is sort of the message and the reality, which we're happy to work kind of open book with Topson as we did with Brunswick. We came to a similar situation where we had planned to do this project during the pandemic in 2021. And the costs were just spiking up, lumber and labor and everything. And, and we hit pause essentially, Jason and I, and said, it's too risky. This is not, all the numbers are moving against us. We can't do this. And we worked with Sally Castello. We worked with the town of Brunswick, who came to us. I didn't know where the TIF was at that point, and said, well, here's a way that we can have a win-win, where the town gets affordable housing and you get, you know, temporary tax reduction or rebate so that we can A, increase the tax value of that lot, which went from $4,000 a year to Brunswick, to $115,000 a year. When the TIF burns off, that'll be $240,000 a year for Brunswick. So it, you know, magnified over 10x the amount of taxes they're getting, even in the short term with the TIF in place compared to the existing lot in Brunswick. We're going to do the same thing, we hope, here in Topson with your support. So that's what we're, you know, hoping for. And for 15 years, would be a TIF at 75% in return for over 60 units of affordable housing through a main housing TIF, basically. And that would generate, we have a slide with the current taxes that are paid and explain that as well. So yeah, this is a really important slide, I think, because right now, the office building, you know, at Forty Union Park is paying $13,000 a year to Topson in taxes. If we're able to partner on this TIF and proceed with this project, that will immediately on opening of the building go up by 928% to $125,000 a year if we're using the 75% level with the TIF. And then when that TIF burns off in 15 years, that 125,000 would go to half a million or more. I mean, taxes might go up in, in 15 years, I would imagine. So if, if we're using current numbers, that's about what it would be today for a $40 million building, which represents a 4,000% increase over the current contribution to funds in Topson. So that's, that's part of the partnership we want to create here, where we're, we don't want to stay at the 13,000 level. We don't want to lose the 180 units of housing. We want to work with you to gain that. But we're, we're in a very tight cost crunch. And so we're exploring, are you interested in partnering and exploring this partnership with us? Next slide.
Sorry, Dave. There we go.
Oh, that's okay. This is sort of a visual graph of the numbers that I just explained. So different learning styles, maybe. The red line is if we don't build anything on the site. The blue chunk represents the construction period and then, you know, new taxes paid essentially and supported. So the green would be the taxes this project is paying. The blue would be the TIF from Topson. And then as you get to year 15 and beyond, the green is all of the tax revenue to Topson. Any questions before I go on on the numbers and? Okay. It confused the heck out of me the first time I read about these. And I, I wouldn't blame anyone for not understanding because I myself sometimes. Jim?
Right here. Trancher.
Jim has worked with a lot of towns all over the state to do dozens of these districts. And he is my resource and go-to, you know, expert on these things. So if we have questions here tonight, I'll probably be deferring to Jim, who's very good at helping towns and developers work together on these things. So these are the, the numbers of the project right now in total. You know, it's, the land is about two and a half million. Construction costs are looking at fifty-five million right now. Again, we think we can get that down by about five or six million through value engineering. It still leaves that five and a half million gap that we have to move forward. Financing costs, soft costs are basically architecture, engineering, all the different professionals that come together, civil, mechanical, structural, you know, all the non-labor and materials part of building a building. And then impact fees represents both rec and sewer type of fees to the town and also for CMP moving power lines that are currently in place in the site.
And as Dave mentioned, you know, these are our initial costs. You can see actually in the numbers, you know, we're at the middle stage of the project right now. You know, so we do have estimates for financing soft cost contingencies. And you might notice the exact number that's put out for construction hard costs. And that was intentional. We did get three bids for this project. We've been working with several contractors, have a full schematic bid set. And as Dave mentioned, allude to, to be totally transparent, the numbers did come in higher than we thought. So that's where we're at today. We realized we have some work to do. We've already redesigned and added efficiency to the project from what the sketch plan submission was that the planning commission had. And we're confident that we can get there and do our part to save, you know, six million dollars out of the hard cost construction budget, you know, lowering all these total numbers to something that would be feasible and would be financeable to a bank. Just like any business, you know, when we go to get bank financing, it's the same thing as getting a loan for a house. It's just a hundred and eighty house mortgages at once. And so the bank is, is really looking at it and looking at a debt service coverage ratio and making sure that the mortgage on the project is secure. And so that's really where this TIF fits in as well, is it allows us to hit those marks on our debt service coverage ratio to really have a project that will appeal to, to local or even national banks to finance the project. And that's where we're deeply invested in the town, just as the town is invested in us and in bringing in, you know, over fourteen million dollars of equity and investment that believes in Topson and believes in building housing to build this project. And the rest would be a very, you know, typical commercial loan from a bank. We have a, a small bank for our Sandpiper project that we loved working with, Mascoma Bank. They may be one of the banks that helped fund this project. But we've kind of went through this math with them and with the town of Brunswick to, to build the Sandpiper project and know the debt service coverage ratios that we have to hit to make a financially feasible project. And so that's where we're at today is looking to work together collaboratively to bridge that gap, to get to that point.
Okay, next slide. So, you know, in conclusion, you know, we always look for a win-win. We're not the kind of developers that just come in willy-nilly and say, I'm doing this because I can, get out of the way sort of thing. Not that developers would ever do that. But we want to work together, you know, both in the look and feel of the building as we did in Brunswick and in the ability to create a project at all. So it represents a really significant tax base expansion for a very minimal impact on town services in terms of schools, other services like that. It's ideally located, you know, near water sewer, things like that. We're trying to be as sustainable and green as we can, something that Jason and I are very passionate about. We're hoping to help make Topson more pedestrian friendly with bike parking. And we hope to have a lot of bikers coming in and out of the building as well as walkers. The next slide. So would you want to open it up if we have time for any questions, comments, feedback from folks here? And happy to answer any questions.
I have a few questions. Would your organization be paying for all the legal fees involved with changing this TIF?
That is typically how it's done, I believe. Jim, correct me if I'm wrong. When you do this, go to the mic.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Just two points. One is it's asking for a credit enhancement agreement within the current TIF. So the legal fees would be for the crafting of that credit enhancement. And we are prepared to cover those costs for the town, whatever the town's typical policy is.
Okay. Would there be any kind of preference given to residents who've been in Topson, say for three years, for some of the lower rates?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'd have to look into the legality of those sort of decisions because there's fair housing laws that prevent discrimination based on certain, you know, guidelines. I will say that most of the people in the affordable units at the Sandpiper were already living in Brunswick. And indeed, most of the residents in the Sandpiper were already living in Brunswick, over half. So in effect, yes, I, I don't know if I should promise that we can set that up as an explicit policy, but I could research that and get back to you for sure. Because if, if it is allowed and that was something that was really important to the select board to support this TIF, I would want to do it.
I'm just curious about the parking. Is it one level underground, two levels underground? What's happening underground?
Great question. What's happening underground is that we are on a ledge. And we would need to do a lot of blasting to get to levels, which everyone loves blasting in downtown. So we're, we're trying to minimize blasting. They may have to shave off, you know, a few pieces here and there of the site, but we're doing everything we can to keep the building high up. And frankly, that's one of the biggest challenges of this entire project, is a sixty-foot height limit, you know, to the peak of the roof essentially in Topson. If we're, if the garage is not truly all the way sunken in the ground and we're, you know, mounding up next to it to accommodate that, we're going to be right at, you know, fifty-nine point nine of our height to pull it off. So if anyone wants to amend those rules and give us an extra ten feet, that'd be super helpful. But to answer your question, one level of parking underneath the building?
I did a few statistics just to kind of look at what it would cost if you had one child in each unit versus two children in each unit. And we're looking at an increase of two million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand if there's one student in each one, just for the school department.
Right.
And if we were doing it for two children in each unit, we'd be looking at four million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars for those students. So we have to think about all of those things as well. Plus, will a hundred and eighty-one units require more police force because there's calls, there's a lot more people buzzing around, you know, in close proximity? Does that cause a problem?
Yeah, those are great questions and very fair questions. I think, you know, two things to realize, you know, unfortunately, the enrollment, at least in the Brunswick schools, and I, I don't know if this is the same in Mount Eriat, has been going down a little bit over time. And again, the, the housing that we're proposing to build is not ideally suited for families. You know, in, in Brunswick, less than five percent of our residents have kids. And I would expect that same ratio here. I mean, it's the same exact building, but bigger. Five percent of families, you know, this building having kids would be nine out of a hundred and eighty. And it might be less than that. So I, I would strongly assume and, and believe based on the Sandpiper experience that this building won't have a significant impact on the schools. I mean, certainly not every unit that, even if we were in a young, you know, baby booming kind of town, it would still not be half or something like that. So.
Go ahead. Yeah, I just want to add one thing on that. Our, our firm does work all over the country, but a lot here in Maine, and I'm located in Maine. And we actually calculate that multiplier. These types of units at studio, one bedroom, and some two bedroom do not generate children typically. So you'll see for those kinds of units, there'll be handfuls of kids as opposed to dozens of kids. And so I just, and that's true across the market in southern Maine and coastal Maine.
How many studios, one bedroom, two bedrooms do you have planned?
It, it's roughly like a quarter studios. And then, you know, half one beds, half two beds in the rest of the mix. And I, I forgot the second part of your first question. And I want to respond to the, the, you know, increase like police presence or something like that. These, you know, unlike, you know, sixty percent needed affordable housing, which, you know, I have residents in other buildings around that get section eight vouchers and things like that. And there are sometimes significant behavior problems that we have to deal with in our management company. We have not had any of those at the Sandpiper. Again, because again, our average age is like sixty. So this is not sort of the hooligans out spray painting or anything like that. It's, it's really more akin to the Highland Green. It is not a place where the police get called for any sort of violent issues that we've had so far. I'm going to knock on a podium wood here, but it's been pretty calm. And, and, you know, Jason and I, you know, when we're working with the management of this building, I mean, that's our number one priority, to create a community where people are happy, they feel safe. And we're not going to be generating, you know, fire rescue, police calls unnecessarily by being negligent or anything like that.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
There are a couple. You were talking about your budget.
Yeah.
When do you expect, when do you expect to start construction on this?
The fastest we could move, if, if a TIF is approved, would be in summer. And I can't avoid the exact, you know, day or week yet because we have to raise fourteen million dollars. We have to go to a bank and get funding. But we would hope to be doing site work in the fall.
So do you have any exposure to the tariffs that have been imposed?
That's why we're here. I mean, that's, we have a ton of exposure to the tariffs and, and it's risky. And I, I can't even promise that if we get a TIF tonight, that we're definitely a hundred percent doing the project. We, we do have to see and right up until we go to loan closing, I mean, something crazy happens geopolitically outside of all of our control, we could lose housing. And, and, you know, we're, we're kind of eyes wide open, but we're guardedly optimistic. And, you know, Jason and Kurt were building housing during the Great Recession. They were building housing during COVID. I mean, these were major scary events times kind of like we're living through now. And we hope that we can weather those storms is, is what we're hoping.
Does your business model basically allow you to recapture those increased costs if they, they do occur in terms of pricing?
That's a great question. I mean, the costs in construction are often shared between developer and contractor in, in what's I call the GMP contract, guaranteed maximum price. We'll have to see what maximum price they're willing to guarantee and if that rises perceived. You know, and there's, there's a whole raft of legalese about what happens if a certain material or issue, you know, exceeds the budget. We have change orders. Projects can, can be really risky and, and I'm nervous about that. I mean, Jason's nervous about that. We're both have young kids. We're not getting into this, you know, with, with just googly eyes for making profits as developers. You know, we're trying to be very careful, which is why we're slowing down and looking to partner with Topson by adding thirty-three percent affordable housing for a TIF.
I'm fortunate enough, I've been through several cycles of, of construction with this. We had, you know, major inflationary issues. I was building several projects in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And it's a great question. The volatility is, is never good for any type of business and particularly construction. You know, we had one project where they had almost all the wood buy, bought out. And then in three months later, when they went to buy the rest of the wood, it was a million dollars more expensive because that was just the global lumber markets. And I'm sure everybody can remember going to Home Depot and seeing two-by-fours at ten dollars and they used to be two dollars on the shelf. So we're definitely have those aspects as part of the project. But we're also a very experienced team. You know, Dave, myself, and my partner Kurt, we've done, you know, over two thousand units together. We do have very experienced contractors and we have an excellent piece at the Sandpiper that really helps us get strong bids where we can say, look, here's a proven project. We want you to bid it just like this. And we work directly with the subcontractors where there is a case where they say, I have new pricing going into effect next month. Do you want me to buy all the light fixtures or all the copper wiring? And we've done that before where, you know, he's like, I signed a, a contract to you based on these prices. If you order all the electrical wiring today, I can hold my price. We work with the bank sometimes because the bank gets a little nervous on that and have certificates of, okay, here's several shipping containers full of electrical wiring to keep the costs on track. But as Dave said, we can't overly promise anything. These are sort of uncharted levels that we're facing. We do know there's a big slowdown in the, in the construction industry and other parts of the country, which, which could help us as well because it is often a national market for materials. So we're, we're hoping that we could take advantage of that national slowdown and being able to help the, put a damper on the rapid housing cost increases that, that we're seeing in Maine because of the lack of supply.
I do have another question. Oh, no, go ahead.
Thank you. Just other couple. I love your mission, your vision. Your presentation is pretty slick as well. I guess I'm going to come up a little bit on details here. So we're talking affordable. I understand state is the definition of that. So if we're talking about two household, or let's say a two-bedroom, or two-person house, the AMI at a hundred and twenty percent would be around ninety-two grand a year. That's not affordable. The people that work in Topson that service places, restaurants, they can barely eat down fifty grand a year. So the rent is a concern for me. I can't even imagine what the guy might be charging for the other sixty percent of the apartments. Clearly, you've got to make your money back. I get it. I own a couple of businesses and the last couple of months have been absolutely horrendous for everything, pretty much. So I get where you're coming from with the uncertainty there, but when I'm, when I think of affordability, this doesn't come to mind, in my opinion. So I mean, not that I wouldn't want a project like this in town. Clearly, we need the housing debt. But to roll it up into an affordable housing TIF or credit, I forgot the acronym, whatever it is.
You got it.
Credit enhancement.
Credit enhancement. I mean, that, that's the tough sell for me because I don't see this as affordable. I see this as, you know, ideal for someone coming up from Boston who wants two-bedroom studio and what. I mean, that's pretty much what this is going to be essentially. And then I guess my other question is, in terms of design, I mean, the, the exit onto one ninety-six there is one-way by VIP. So we'd be talking about adding another stoplight right next to the school. I mean, it's correct.
And we're not proposing to change any of the exits from the building. So if they go out that way, they would use the current routing.
Yeah, that's really bad.
And, and I, I really appreciate that question and that's really important. And like I said in the beginning, I, I think we can't do economically what Brunswick Housing can do. You know, we're targeting middle-class working folks. And that level that, that you cited, and I think that, that's probably exactly right, you know, for Saginaw County for two people. You know, so I think, okay, ninety-two thousand, they're both working, so they're returning like forty-five, forty-six, you know, grand a year. That's not wealthy to me. I mean, I remember my first job at a nonprofit. I had to like, I argued to get from thirty to thirty-two grand a year, you know, in my salary. So it, it is interesting, the range that we have. You know, the Sandpiper, up on the fourth floor, we have a penthouse unit that we're getting four thousand dollars a month for. We have affordable studios that we're getting twelve hundred dollars a month for. And twelve hundred for a studio, you know, for a working person in town, that really is doable. You know, the, the rule of thumb that we use is that you're not paying more than a third of your gross monthly income in rent in that room, just sort of a universal national rule of thumb. But that means someone would, who's earning, you know, three to four to five thousand dollars a month would be able to afford, you know, most of our certainly affordable one-bedrooms and studios in the building. So I, I get it, you know, and I wish we could make them cheaper. You know, we're, we're not a nonprofit and, you know, we're trying to do middle-class housing, which is really tough. There's not much subsidy or, or help, you know, out there to get that done. But I think overall, by, I, one of the things that often gets missed about housing in general is like a, a supply and demand effect, where by increasing the supply, you know, by a hundred and eighty units in Topson, that will actually make, it will take pressure off a lot of the other rents that are here, you know, because it won't fill in a day. I mean, we're planning like a twelve-month, you know, time horizon, you know, to lease a building of the size. But whenever you get. Um but when whenever you get, you know, new supply and you have the same demand, uh prices can either stay flat or go down. Um so I ju- I kind of joke with people, why is housing cheaper in Lewiston than in Portland? In Lewiston, they have a huge, you know, mill town that built up, you know, in the late eighteen hundreds. There's a ton of supply there and there's not as much demand to live there and prices are, you know, a third of what they are in Portland where it's incredibly difficult to build housing for various reasons, we don't even get to do tonight, but they're not building enough and thus the demand is really high and the prices are high. So we hope to help in the way that we can, but yeah, it's not, it's not like a nonprofit could do for sure.
I have a few questions as well. I do wanna touch on the same thing and echo what Matt said about traffic. You know, I used to go in and out of there. It's a, it's a disaster. You know, at certain times of the day, when people are going to work and coming back from work, I imagine people driving their cars out of there in the morning in an already horrendous place where kids in buses are going into the high school next to a stoplight that's very close. You can wait fifteen minutes sometime for one car to take a left-hand turn and with all the other cars trying to do that, it's gonna create issues. There's, I mean, those are things that are gonna have to be realized and dealt with moving forward because it won't be long before something has to be done. Don't know if that is. I'm just, I can foresee that happening. Um and I also, one of the big highlights was, you know, using the term affordable quite a bit. I just think that there's a disconnect between what affordable is. In in Topsum, uh you know, the average income, I think, doesn't exceed fifty thousand dollars on average here. Uh we're talking about workforce housing with mostly retirees. If mostly retirees are in there, it's retiree housing. You know, it's not workforce housing at that rate. But I do draw the same issues with the cost because the rents of even the affordable housing are still more than my mortgage. Uh and that to me just expresses the idea that it's not really helping people in Topsum. It's helping other people outside of Topsum move to Topsum and come to Topsum and expand into Topsum. Where the real need of what we, we really need in this town is workers, you know, uh lower, lower wage workers because I go to Target and I have to check out everything myself because there's never anybody at behind the counter. They can't find anybody to work and they can't find anybody to work because there's nowhere to live. Affordable housing is is really important in Topsum right now in order to boost our economy. If we just keep piling in with more workforce housing, we're gonna have all this retail sites that we can't fill, uh we can't utilize and then we have other problems that are gonna happen. So I I just think that is part of it. The other thing that um that I wanted to bring up is there are multiple other apartment buildings that are proposed to go in. Um down over by Goodwill, potentially across the street here. Uh also, those aren't asking for TIFs and that also helps alleviate the same, the same arguments that you're making this evening. So I think it's really tough to think about a TIF when the uncertainty of times, the 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 things that we've discussed as concerns. Um I just have a hard time kind of thinking about putting a TIF towards those projects.
I appreciate those concerns, uh Brian. You know the pro-
Yeah.
It's, I, you know, better than anyone that's, that's someone who worked there and ran a business there. Um so starting with uh traffic, um which is a totally valid concern, that's one of our goals to address. And we do that through a traffic study, looking at, you know, peak travel times and you know, Jason and Jim and others know more about how those are done than I, but that'll be a really key part of what we're doing to see what it triggers. And if it triggers the need for different infrastructure or not. Um one thing that surprised me, you know, in learning about traffic studies is the difference between residential and commercial. Uh is really profound. And so we had considered putting a coffee shop in this building. That would have almost doubled the, you know, trips in and out of the building at peak times uh to residential. I think what we're seeing at Sandpiper is a lot of the people there are working remotely, you know, so they're avoiding that sort of peak commuting times. Uh cuz we have rooms where they can use as a little conference room or work room in the building uh to work remotely. Um and then, uh you know, a lot of them don't need to commute at a certain time. Um so it'll be interesting to see. I I agree that Topsum has some infrastructure challenges around these big congested intersections. My simplistic solution is uh roundabouts. I love them. They're so great. You never have to stop and I w- I won't, I won't try to sell you on those tonight, but it it's different issue. With affordability, you know, again, I, we have a worker from Wild Oats, you know, living with us. That's their only income and and they can afford to live in Sandpiper. Over half of the people in Sandpiper are from Brunswick, you know, coming from other rentals and different places because for a little bit more or sometimes the same or less than what they're paying, they get a really different quality. So that's what we're trying to bring here. Um and we do see workers and it's not all, I shouldn't have said it's all retirees or something like that. Well, there are a lot of working people that live at Sandpiper that live here at Topsum.
That led me to another question as well.
Sure.
The rents that you're charging. There's a, I'm assuming a, a range of rents from affordable to penthouse. Uh in addition to those rents, are there going to be additional fees for underground parking for access to the pool, access to the conference room and all of the other things that would bring
Yeah.
more money into the building? Um increasing the rent for that stay-at-home worker that's going to be on the computer and need the conference center first, you know, their two thousand dollar rent, does it now go up to twenty-two hundred dollars or twenty-four hundred dollars to access everything in the building?
No, that that's a great question too. And we had a pool and then we had to cut it. I mean, that's part of our cutting process. So unfortunately, they can't go to the pool, but um we uh try to never increase rents in a double-digit kind of percentage and we're not doing that right now at Sandpiper. Um we uh I don't like the kind of nickel and diming of fees. You know, some places charge, they have like ten or twenty different fees that they might charge. We debated this really intensely in our team and decided to do what's called an all-inclusive fee, where it's, it's your electric, your water heat, your plowing, your landscaping. Literally every, almost every possible thing uh you could have rolled up into one fee and it's just like a big number. We put it right on the marketing of the units. Cuz I think it is really important to be upfront about what people are getting. And I don't like it when you know, you click on something thinking it's ten bucks and it turns out to be fifteen by the time you're checking out, you know, like that's not the way I like to run a business. The only other two fees we do have right now are the underground parking, you know, which is actually be, you know, different than the surface parking. Um and pets, we have a pet fee cuz often the carpet or, you know, whatever is not the same as women leave, but those are the only two beyond the, the one fee.
So what do you anticipate those fees to be? I'm just thinking if I were to move into that place
Right.
and I wanted to have a pet and I wanted to park underground and I wanted to be in a studio, what would it cost me?
Yeah, no, those are good questions. Um I I don't know what our nu- final numbers are gonna be cuz we're two years out for Topsum. I can tell you the Sandpiper, you know, the all-inclusive fee uh which covers, you know, uh gigabit internet, which is really fast, all the heating and cooling and that kind of thing ranges uh from ninety-five dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Okay.
Our pet fees, I think, are forty-five a month. And underground parking might be ninety-five. I'm not directly managing and charging this to tenants, so I need to check numbers and I'm happy to do that and get back to you if you want the exact.
I I know, I just, I'm thinking roundabout, but that's
Yeah.
still an additional four hundred dollars a month for someone to live, especially if the rent is twenty-two hundred or twenty-three hundred. God, you're like doubling my mortgage, you know, of my house. And that's, and that's, it, I know that's the times we're in. I'm just, I'm in a hard place with that because it's just, it's very challenging. What I hear from just speaking in the town is affordability is such a big game. Um and to price people out of the town is hard, you know, when people that live in the town need a place to live but can't afford to live here and we continue to take other people in from outside. It just becomes more worrisome for the people that already live here. And I think that's what part of our elected officials are for is to help protect the town in that regard. Also to help promote the development and economic piece of it, but there's, you know, there's the balancing in between with everything that well, all the variable parts.
Oh, totally. I I agree and I I really like it when towns prioritize uh low-income housing, like incentivize it. This isn't low-income housing, we're workforce, but um you know, for low-income housing, you know, you can do a hundred percent TIF, you can, you know, eliminate impact fees, things like that. We're not asking for that level, you know, support here, but um we do see a lot of working people, you know, in the Sandpiper and I know we'll see a lot of working people if we're able to move forward in the project here. Um but I don't wanna come here and and sell you this utopian vision that it, you know, that all of them are gonna be really cheap because we need to have the expensive ones in order to have the cheaper ones, basically.
And to add on to that, there's, there's actually some excellent research. The, the Federal Reserve Bank um of the United States does a, a ton of research and they have hundreds of economists. So they've posted some great research papers recently and some other academic papers where the communities throughout the country that have been able to increase housing. And a lot of it is very similar to this, right? When you build new housing, um it is sort of more expensive than than older housing is. Um similar to it would be in in automobiles or appliances or other industries because it's just the cost of building something new. But in community through community, whether it's east coast, west coast, middle of the country, um those communities that have really built more housing per population have really done the best job the past decade of holding costs down. Um and that's actually an example here. I'm in Minnesota. You know, we built a lot of housing um per capita. Very similar, I mean, this same type of building in the Sandpiper and we've had some of the lowest rent increases throughout the country. You know, same as areas, you've actually heard like Colorado, like at first they thought, oh, Colorado's booming, but there was such an increase in supply that rents are going down. And I think what's really happened in Maine is there has not been nearly enough housing built to to match the population and job growth, right? It's really a population and job growth balance. Um so just adding that supply helps tremendously. And and I would say there's two radically different ways to do housing. And we've actually worked, um working on a project right now to do what's called a fully regulated tax credit affordable housing. And those are the projects that you see that come in at fifty, sixty percent AMI. But I would say that those are almost entirely funded by the federal government. They have programs where you get tax credits. It's a third year. It's funded with state grants. It's funded with city grants. And and to be completely honest and transparent, those type of projects are not as efficient. They often cost a lot more per unit and it's made up because it's, all of the funding is from taxpayers and all of the funding is is paid that way through various credits and a lot of it's the federal government, so local municipalities might not see it. But I think with what we see going on, who knows the pipeline of that affordable housing supply and it takes you've heard stories, three, four, five years to to get these projects built, to assemble your capital stack with the whole level of grants to do it. And I think it's a great model. It produces much-needed housing, but it's slow. And and this is a model that we can do very efficiently with, with much less um public resources total. Uh much lower unit costs on average and get it built within a couple of years to help immediately instead of looking out five or ten years with a federally funded uh tax credit project. So they're two very different business models and often different types of developers that are able to do each way to provide housing, but I would say that even straight market rate housing has shown to have a tremendous benefit with tamping down um housing costs for communities.
So I really wanna be very clear here. Um my perspective is not the maybe crap going on down in Cumberland and Freeport and stuff like that. They all have ridiculous excuses not to put in affordable housing. But again, for me, it's a, just a tough pill to swallow with the term affordable. Um if you guys weren't asking for five point five million, I would be like, please build what you're proposing right now. I guess, would it be possible to take a look, uh well, here we talked about the split yet, you're still, you're asking for seventy-five percent, correct? Yeah, that that's well outside of the norms with what we usually do, like significantly outside of the norm. So I understand it's entirely negotiable. I'm a Muske student. I I study TIFs. I I get it. Um there's a lot of flexibility there, but it's still it sets a precedent, I think, that might be a slippery slope in the future. Um and it's also a yeah, we just don't have anything like that here right now. Um so where I'm going with this is, would it be possible for us to be able to take a look at some kind of pro forma? Um just to see what you guys are are looking at. Like, I don't wanna slam the door on this, but my perspective, yes. Um and I think just being able to look at your pro forma would probably be a little more helpful, I think, for processing this. Um that's just my opinion, but we got four of the board members who may have a different opinion.
That's the beauty of democracy. I appreciate the question. Jim, did you?
I I just wanted to make s- all your points were well taken. I just, um, we did wanna stay within the limits of the current TIF for it's seventy-five percent proposed because of the cost that you seen tonight, which was sort of, it was a limited pro forma, like it just had the sources and cost. Um and um the uh term is fifteen years, so um just to know that like it's quite a bit less than like some of the typical asks throughout Southern Maine and Central Maine of thirty years, twenty-five years, it's fifteen. I'm not saying that that should be what you should do. That's for you to decide, but I just do wanna mention that it's a fifteen-year term. So the payback to the taxpayer, as you saw from Dave's charts, basically starts immediately because of the, it's still twenty-five percent going there and it's better than what's being produced now. And then over time, it grows and grows and then in fifteen years, it's a hundred percent. Minus cost to serve, which we've already tried to address the cost to serve. But but points well taken. I just wanna be clear about that. And what we're asking for too, David, if I'm wrong, sorry again. Um by the way, we're not, we're not here for a final approval tonight, nor would that be possible. We're looking for guidance as to whether we can work with staff, if it's worth the money and risk to work with staff to come up with a final proposal to bring forward to to the board and eventually and I'm not an attorney, but I do believe based on your current TIF, it would have to go out to vote. So I just wanna make sure that's what we're, we're asking for, the ability that it's, but we don't wanna go that path if there's a sense that this would never go forward to a town vote.
Yeah, Matt, I appreciate the question and the Muske classes were my favorite ones. When I was in business school, I came over and joined you guys a little bit. Um so
Nineteen ninety, Brad.
Yeah, we're all, we're all you made.
That's really old.
I have a little alumni party after, but um yeah, we, we wanna work with the town and you know, we're kind of at your mercy here. I mean, we, we have a project that doesn't work right now and I hope we can work together to make it work and and we're willing to make compromises and and work with you on that.
Um Sky or Josh, I'd just like your feedback on where you stand with this, if you could.
Dave, I tried to, I wasn't trying to keep you out of the meeting, but try to send your screen share so I could see Jason better. I don't know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
Jason's the one sharing.
Jason is the one.
Oh, okay. So Jason and there we go.
Yeah, I I'm sorry. Uh and did you need any reference to the tip?
I just wanna know, like, you've ref- yeah, you've looked at these documents and this plan and where does the planning department stand on?
So the, the site plan has come through us for um sketch and sure, I'm worried here, but I think it's refusing to talk to this project, so I won't actually reference him. Um it's, looks like a great one. I think it's a really good way to get in filled housing in Topsum. Um I think that we, you know, worked with them to change zoning last year to make something like this possible. Cause everything we've been trying to move forwards to, this is an unused parking lot. If we can put housing in an unused parking lot, that's pretty darn good. Um I don't think that the financials are really within my ability to speak to, you know, it's something we'd love to see, but I understand that there's um a lot of a lot that goes into a decision like that, but um planning problem. Certainly happy to work on a project like this. Um if it came through and I do think in my professional opinion that it's a good one that would put housing in a good place.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Can I ask Jim a question?
Please.
Jim, um I talked to our town attorney real briefly about this and he was suggesting that the lot be taken out of the current TIF and then have its own affordable housing TIF. Is there a reason why you wouldn't wanna do it that way?
I'll just speak hypothetically cuz I think some of it would have to be considered by our team. Uh we're o- we would be open to that. Uh so it would essentially be, as long as the terms are meet the financial needs of the project to fill the gap based on further like deliberation, right? Then we, we're open to whichever way it's done. The only reason we chose that was it seemed to be, and I'm not speaking for anybody in the town, it was the easiest path because they only needed fifteen years. You still have sixteen or seventeen or eighteen years left on that TIF that's existing and it allows you to do credit enhancement agreements. So it was the path of least resistance uh to be able to do that. If you pull it out, it's a lot more work and cost, but in terms of process. So we're not opposed to that though, but that's where we found the, the best solution forward, but we're willing to work with the town. But we're willing to work with the town on what you feel is the best solution.
One of our challenges sometimes with our TIFs is, we get the best benefit of the town. If we can find an expense we would have had to pay anyway to use our share of the TIF money.
Yeah.
And I know in the official affordable housing TIF, we can use it for school costs. So every year we could maximize our benefit, because we certainly have school costs that are going to well exceed what the TIF would generate in taxes. If we did it the first, the first way you suggested, and amended the current TIF, it isn't currently an affordable housing TIF, and using cost setting school costs isn't an acceptable thing. Are you thinking we could make that works under the current TIF?
We can make either, we would, and jump into my law. We would be, like I said, more than happy to work with you, whichever way is best. And is it Phil that you're working with?
Yep.
So, and we're used to working with Phil, so we could, you know, offline, work with you and staff and figure that out. And I do, I don't want to quote this, but because I'm not an attorney, I do believe there were some changes to law too that did allow education costs to be dealt with in non-affordable housing TIFs, or non-housing TIFs. But either way, we're happy to work with you.
That's it, thanks.
That was suggested.
There's someone behind you, are we allowed to take questions?
What's that?
Someone in the.
Kurt would like.
Please.
I don't know if you're taking a public comment, but I have a few. Hello, I'm Kurt Newfeld, 14th Mary Meeting Drive. I've come out to speak in favor of the TIF. I'm not here on behalf of TDI, but maybe now I've been on TDI for some time. And I can say that I think it's a good project in that we've studied the available places for housing and to housing projects like this, particularly with water and sewer available, and there are very few. I'd almost say none, but that would be exaggeration. There are very few opportunities like this. We know that we have the housing demand. A few years back, a boat fellow did a survey in most town businesses and found that we were over two hundred employees short to have what the, our current businesses need to be staffed at a level that would be comfortable. And this wouldn't be two hundred brand new employees, but at fifty, it would be a huge help for existing businesses just to have employees that don't have to drive from Lewis to be here and shot. The town has had a, I'm sorry, the town has a good history with TIFs. Highland Greens wouldn't exist if it weren't for a TIF. And I don't think they would disagree that they are a valuable asset in our community. The Thompson Fair Mall largely have TIF money's working for them. So have this credit enhancement offered, or if you can meet with a partway, you know, preferably all the way, to bring something like this to town. I've been here for twenty years, and I will say, I'm not involved with this project at all. I know Dave Fulmer, and he did work with Site Lines when I was with Site Lines. But I'm no longer a consulting engineer that way, so I'm just speaking here as a person in the town that has a perspective on how this is valuable to the town. I mean, we've talked a lot about what a great project it is. But to the town, we're going to take a parcel, a parcel that has thirteen hundred dollars a year in taxes and go up four thousand times in fifteen years to, that's a pretty good return on the money. And what does it cost the town for the TIF to begin? I don't, they're going to cover the lawyer fee, so is there a cost to the taxpayers of this town to ensure that this has been agreement? I don't think so. So we're going to take very old building in a parking lot and churn that around. I would, I would put money in on that debt, certainly better than the stock market today. That is a heck of a return on the value for signing a lease paper to allow this project to move forward. If they can even get to it. Yes, there's technical aspects that they will have to address, whether it's a traffic, get back study, environmental studies, that's all through the planning board, we have great rules in place for that to happen. That, you said, we've never done anything like this before. We don't live in a world like we lived in before. If this is an opportunity to bring a hundred and eighty dwelling units to town and a massive tax boost to boot, with no money to the employers, maybe this is a precedent we could set. Because remember a couple of years ago, we did that Camoy report? And they came and they looked and saw how many housing units we might be able to absorb in this town based on the reward, it was two hundred and ninety or something like that. But again, to you then, hardworking people like Aaron St. Pierre doing a housing project out in, off Brubaker Lane. I don't know how many houses he's got up, maybe a dozen? And now what's happening to him with this? Interest rates and price rates and all like that going on. He's doing one acre lots. And while he's doing that, he's creating roads that have become public roads for our public works department to maintain. All that infrastructure is getting added and added, causing costs back on the town to maintain. We got one piece of land that's already got a road to it. The increase in cost to the town for a hundred and eighty units is almost zero. So we've already got utilities there, we already got this, it's going to be much closer to police and fire. It's a beautiful project for the town. It's a great opportunity, and I hope that you will consider meeting some folks who are going to come in here and put seventy million dollars up. At least we hit the partway, so we can get that kind of investment in the town. And we come to planning board meetings and meet on TDI. I haven't seen anybody do that for housing, I don't know what the market ask for cost. But I haven't seen anybody come to town with a big ambitious project. And if we just say, yeah, we're not interested, because it's something that we haven't done before, because it's.
I don't think that's the real reason.
I understand what you're saying.
It's not simplified like that.
But I am saying, I hope that you will see the opportunity in medium world way. I understand affordability as a concern here. But I can guarantee you from my experience at Civilist Dayway Projects, you're not going to be able to get brand new housing stock at twelve hundred dollars a month for rent. The housing that's being built, if it's a single family home, it'll probably sell at more than four hundred thousand dollars. And if you took a three year mortgage at twenty percent down, a four hundred thousand dollar home, we're going to be in the twenty-two to twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars a month range. If you, I don't even know what they're able to charge over at the Thompson Housing Authority project over off of Tepper, but it's probably north of twelve hundred dollars. And we just don't have subsidies for private developers to do that. So this is a big opportunity. It's a great increase in profit or taxes for the town. And meanwhile, what's going on, some of those, there's some sheltering of dollars that would go to the county as a result of the TIF as well. So TIFs could be a fabulous tool to use to encourage the development, and we really could use the housing. Now, nobody can predict whether or not it's going to be a bunch of retirees, or millennials, whatever, or nomad working from home, what are they going to be? I don't think it'll be a bunch of fam who's with the size of ears who are talking about the whole of Walmart schools. So I do hope you give a lot of consideration. From the TDI perspective, it's a job, it's a project that we would certainly endorse. I can't speak on the behalf, because we have had a meeting. But I think this is bringing forward a really good project, and this probably brings another perspective to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, next agenda.
Well, back to my, for our request, could we ask them to look at pro forma?
Oh, I thought you did, sorry.
Yeah. Well, I'm really, really asked, but.
Yes, no, we very much expect that to be part of the process, we did that.
Yeah. So based on that discussion, I probably should table this until we get that information, and then we can have a discussion on it.
Works your way in.
And, but thanks very much for the preface of presentation and, so we talk.
Thank you all, appreciate your feedback.
Thank you.
All right, twenty-five dash twenty-nine. Consideration and any appropriate action on accepting thirty-three thousand dollars, thirty-three thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and five cents from the Maine EMS stabilization funding program. Chief?
Good evening, Christopher Wallen. Yeah. I, oh, I was here actually. This was part of the governor's thirty-one million dollars that she gave to Maine EMS about three, two, three years ago. This is the second installment. Our portion is thirty-three thousand. It's not really a grant I have to apply for, but it's more or less to inform town on what we're going to spend the money on. The money's already there for us, I would like to apply and accept it tonight. I've been talking to Mark on what we're going to use the funds for, and we're going to use twenty-five thousand of it towards increasing wages for recruitment and retention, and then I'm going to use the remaining, I think it's ADE one forty-nine oh five towards a mental health program, mental health training, peer support team type of project. So, this money can't be used to offset your current expenditure in your budget, it has to be to improve and extend and sustain and grow.
And have, can counties apply for it? If so, could they use it for some of the budget holes that the Council of Federal Funds recently has provided?
Which is why the first time around, I used it to fund the Community Paramedicine Program in another year. Because that's above and beyond what we already had budgeted, because that wasn't a grant the first time. So this has to be something in addition to what you're already, you're already doing. So, and that's it, really.
Your phone is there?
It won't add an hour and a half to the town meeting.
All right.
Do you need us to divide out how you're doing it?
No, not really, because it comes to us in a sum of thirty-three. I just have to tell the state what our projects are.
Okay.
So it meets their twenty-three-five EMS vision and sustainability, so.
And you're both applying for and accepting?
Yeah, it's not really an application, it's already awarded to us, I just got to fill out a form and tell them what we're using the money for.
Okay.
Yeah, so, if I can do it all tonight, it would be great.
I'm making a motion to accept the thirty-three thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and five cents from the Maine EMS stabilization funding program.
Sorry.
Is that a good amount, or we have to put any, perfect. Proven, secured, all in favor?
Awesome.
Thank you. All right, twenty-five dash thirty. Consideration and any appropriate action to hold a public hearing on the proposed May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five special town meeting warrant on April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five at six thirty PM.
So to set the table a little, the proposed warrant has items that you're familiar with, and that's the budget items, the first ones. And then it has Ed's favorite articles, and towards the end, the housekeeping ones that he likes to move to accept at once. But tonight we have a little information for you on the things in between, so that you know, understand what's on the warrant, and so that you can decide that you are happy with it and want to put it out to a public hearing on the seventeenth. The first one that we'll have a little extra information on is the acceptance of King Road. So if I can call Planner Franklin up to tell us where we're at on King Road. And this is the road that services the new HACM attack, housing, affordable housing.
Absolutely, so it's an interesting position, this road. So the road is, I'll say it's mostly ready to be accepted. And so it was brought to the planning board, and the way that this works, for anyone who might not be totally familiar, is that when a road comes for acceptance, it first goes to the planning board, the planning board will then make a recommendation on whether or not the town should accept it. And then the planning, the select board will then get the planning board's recommendation, and then they'll make the decision whether or not it goes on to the board. And so the planning board did recommend acceptance of the road. However, there were some concerns by town staff on the road, whether or not it was ready to be accepted by the town. And so there are a few things that do need to be fixed. There are some comments that need to be addressed before the town, before the planning board would offer their full recommendations, what they did is they gave a conditional leave. There is a condition of that recommendation that basically states that all of staff's comments, and particularly comments from the town's peer review engineer and the Department of Public Works. And those have to be completed before April sixteenth. If those items are not completed by April sixteenth, and that both the town's peer review engineer and the Department of Public Works have both said, great, it looks good, then based on that condition, the recommendation from the planning board is void. And so we, town staff, we will take it from the warrant. So, do you have any questions about that? I know it's a little.
Essentially, what we're trying to do is, as you heard earlier tonight, it's hard to do housing affordable. But, and the Thompson Housing Authority was expecting to have by next winter the road not being plowing, the road themselves, have it be a town road. We could end up having a special town meeting this year, but we'd rather not have to have one certainly just for this road. So our thought was to go to the developer and say, if you can get this all done by the sixteenth, we'll leave it on the warrant. But if it can't get done, then after the public hearing, the seventeenth, it would be removed, so it wouldn't go to town meeting. That way, we don't have something on the warrant for road that isn't ready. But on the other hand, if there's any way we can get it through, we want to try to, to try to make the housing affordable. The item that needs to wait is that there's a small area that has to be paved, and they need the plant to open up and get the stuff. We're hopeful it'll happen by the sixteenth, but it definitely, it couldn't happen in March because it wasn't ready yet.
So is this section of the road that we're going to take over, is it just specification of all of our other roads?
And yes, generally it is. On the whole, it does fit our specifications, otherwise we, the Director of Public Works, Dennis, he would have told us no, and it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have been recommended. It's just a few things, such as the paving that Mark responded to, that it's just, it wouldn't make sense for the town to take it and be responsible for that. On top of it, there is a fifty thousand dollar warranty on it.
Yeah, bond.
A bond, and that's specifically for, that's not for these items. That's if something unforeseen were to happen within the period of a year after the town were to accept it. And that's also in the conditions.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion?
Basically, just, we'll continue with the presentations, but. So the next item, which I don't think probably needs anything extra tonight, was we've obviously got an article in there for the acceptance of the climate action plan. Then after that, we've got some zoning amendments that are in there that the planning board has requested, and I'll call Planning Director Salati up to explain those.
So the zoning amendments that we're proposing this year, I think can be described in two kind of things. We're looking to make things a little easier on single family homeowners, and we're cleaning up the code and trying to close any little loopholes and stuff that we've found through just day to day work. So there's three changes to the Table of Dimensional Requirements, and these are mostly are related, these are related to the maximum purview coverage metric that was adopted last year. We're changing it to be a little bit higher in mixed use limited zone. And that brings it into alignment with other similar zones, this was a new metric, and we're just kind of working out the kinks with it, I guess I would say. We've also, Note G is basically closing the loophole, just making sure that it's clear that common plan developments are subject to maximum purview coverage requirements. And then footnote thirty has been added to require maximum purview coverage only for subject development, subject to site plan, I do sorry about that. And this is what I refer to with making this a little easier for single family homeowners. People wishing to install a shed or patio would need to get a professional land surveyor to adequately do that under our current codes. This was just something we didn't foresee when we first adopted it, we just, we didn't catch it. We're trying to fix it now, we don't want to make things hurt people for those little things. And usually if you have someone trying to pave their entire lot or cover their entire lot, it's going to be subject to site plan review, because they'd be an industrial or commercial or multifamily use that has the capital to do that, because I don't think most people can actually afford to pave their entire lot these days. So, that's the Table of Dimensional Requirements. The last three are really just cleanup and continuity, making sure that maximum purview coverage is used throughout the code rather than something else like lot coverage or the floor ratio or open space ratio, which is what this sort of replaced, it's not a direct correlation. But just cleaning that up, and then stormwater management, that's really just something we realized wasn't completely clear there. And we wanted to make sure that all development or her list size has to all stormwater rules, which, yeah, that's just a cleanup thing. So, does anyone have any questions?
Okay.
Great.
Next item is we have an amendment to the solid waste ordinance to make it clear that the transfer station will not accept recycling that it's compacted. And Ed, if you can come up and explain that.
Recently, we have new contracts gotten in July. And out of that contract for our recycling, there is a penalty if there's too much crap mixed in, if you will. Um and we've had some uh conversations that we've heard that of compact trucks doing the zero sort recycling and wanting to drop it off at our facility. The problem we have with that is we know that curbside recycling is always near as clean as our process that we run. So we're, what we're looking to do is just if they wanna bring their recycling in, it has to be loose so we can sort the crap out of it. Uh so we're basically limiting to no compacted loads of curbside recycling.
Any questions on that one?
You're talking about curbside, like trash pickup that dumps to you guys.
Say, find trade waste, let's say, goes, goes to town, they can, they wanna bring their recycling task, they, it costs them too much.
You're gonna say no because you don't.
Money, we're gonna say, well, take it, but it has to be loose so we can make sure it's clean.
No compact.
Because when it compacted on curbside, just by nature of the beast, they don't have time to pick through a bag, throw everything. Even though they throw it in the back of their trucks, they're not equipped with it, they don't have time to pull all that stuff out of it.
So when I get my trash picked up, I get trash, then a couple hours later, they come by, do it again for the recycling, but they they.
Well, it should be the other way, the recycling goes first, they leave the trash behind for the trash truck later.
One of the other, either way, one, one arrow gets picked up.
One of the other and some of them get mixed together.
And another one goes, so they're uh you know, the the recycling isn't really recycling.
Right, now, looking at what we pull out ourselves and 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 the people at town, we look pretty good. But looking at what we pull out, those who think, you know, this can of beans is recyclable.
Right.
It's not, it's gonna be empty and clean first, so. And then where this is going to the processor in that, in that form, those are all problems, problematic. So there's some fines that they put into our contract to kind of make sure that we do keep it clean. We do take pride in that process and and the materials we put out and stuff.
So everyone in Thompson still has access to recycling, we just want to do it in a way that we can get good quality recycling, so that it actually gets used as recycling, it doesn't end up in a landfill.
And this takes place in July?
I'm sorry.
This takes place in July?
But just, the the new contract's passed in July.
Will we be announcing that, like on the sound and and stuff, saying that we're not going from two items, two numbers to seven numbers?
A few weeks, a few weeks beforehand, we'll start an education program with EcoMan. They're gonna come down, they're gonna do a whole program with us, they're gonna supply brochures, uh recycled bins, um that's more than open and some rights, just basically be around for the week or so for transition. Uh we're kind of giving people heads up now that, you know, rather than beating on you for putting all this number one plastic we don't want, we're just kind of pulling it out but saying, hey, in July it'll change, so.
You can do it in July, just not today.
Right, just to, just to expense a better next year.
Thank you.
We started to start filing it.
I I know there's a, there's a, I know there's one gentleman at town who who has a business somewhere else, so he takes his home recycling, the the stuff I don't take to that one, because it goes through EcoMan, so. So there's other ways. And I have the same idea if if, for instance, a a local contractor decides that recycling is too expensive, which is, it's quite a bit from what I understand for that, for them, they may just say, well, pick up your trash, but you wanna recycle, you'll have to bring it, so, so. Something to that nature. Uh because trash disposal, recycling is just getting expensive.
And our budget upcoming was based on our historical amount of trash and recycling we take in. Um as you know, we get fees that offset the trash. We don't get fees that offset the recycling. So if all of a sudden, and if we're getting all kinds of compacted recycling that we can't even sort effectively, we'd really have a big hit to the budget because we're paying to be disposable in this trash.
Right, and now recycling, uh it could cost up as far, uh as high as a hundred and seventy-five dollars a ton. So again, if I can get rid of the trash for a hundred and ten, I'd rather put it out. So. Any other questions?
So the the last two things I want to point out with the warrant is a couple of format changes. Um last year, we had a uh member of the public who asked that they have an explanation on some of the things that were unusual in the warrant, so they could understand them. So we've incorporated that this year, and you'll find an italicized explanation of some of the things that aren't typical on the warrant. And then in the past, there was on the financial ones, there used to be a breakdown of a how much thought might be coming from a TIF, how much was coming from um general taxation, how much was coming from state revenue sharing. Uh all that is really swags, um and not anything that's said anywhere. The, we vote on the expenditures, we don't vote on the sources. Um so we've taken out the sources other than the test, just because we think it might be interesting for people to know how much of the TIF is actually going to offset taxes somewhere. Um so having, and answering any questions about the warrant. Um and if there's something you don't want on there, then feel free to um bring it forward, otherwise there's a proposed motion at the bottom of the memo.
And we'll have an answer with regard to the conditions by the day before the next meeting?
For the King Road? Yeah, the intent and why we gave that deadline is so that before the public, it might not be till the morning of the public hearing, but before the public hearing starts, you'll know if they've finished the road up to the specifications required.
Okay.
And then one last point is, we're in a tight printing deadline, so it actually, we've only got part of the day on the eighteenth to finalize things. Um so we can pull the King Road, we can still pull the King Road out if we need to, but um we will be working quick. And tonight I'm gonna ask you to actually to the signature page of the warrant in advance, because they're gonna start plugging into the computers and stuff at the prior, starting tomorrow.
So do we need to add in that including the public hearing for zoning amendments to this?
Nope, all you need to do is use the, because you, the draft warrant has all this stuff in it that we just went through.
I would like to propose a motion. All the public hearing on proposed May twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five special town meeting one, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five at six thirty post meridian.
I have a motion.
Say something.
I have something, all in favor. Very good. Sorry, it was a motion. It's twice, okay, good. All right, executive session. Article twenty-five thirty-one, entered into executive session pursuant to one M R S A section four oh five six D to discuss labor contract negotiations.
I make a motion that we move into executive session.
So we just talk about it. We're in executive session.
I feel like I'm, thanks, I'm hurrying. Get out of here.